Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. We'll call Mr. Lundberg.
Odom.
Yes.
Odie. Plumper.
Yes.
Saxor.
Yes.
Schrader.
Yes.
All right, with that, if there are no changes that need to be made to the agenda tonight, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. Roll call, vote, Mr. Lundberg.
Odie.
Yep.
Schrader.
Yes.
Plumper.
Yes.
Saxor.
Yes.
Odom.
Yes. Thank you very much, motion passes. Conflict of interest disclosure waiver requests, there are none tonight. That takes us to our next item, approval of the minutes from the regular meetings that we had on February 11th and February 25th. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented tonight.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. Roll call, vote, Mr. Lundberg.
Odie.
Yes.
Schrader.
Yes.
Plumper.
Yes.
Saxor.
Yes.
Odom.
Yes. Just to clarify for anybody in the viewing public, when we have someone on the phone, we have to do roll call votes for everything, that's why it'll be a little bit redundant, but, you know, we can lengthen out our meeting and not be so efficient. I'm kidding, Ellie. All right, financial items, Mr. Lundberg.
Okay, any questions on the invoices that we presented in the packet for you guys? Four hundred thousand total invoices, thirty percent of them were utilities, Suvale Energy and Constellation Energy. I had another one noted on page eight, final payment to Pesca Construction of eighty-four-hundred. The total contract was four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and two. That was the high school, former high school office remodel, home ec room and the science room remodel. Complete. Page ten, we have the second half of the payment for Career Academy slots, forty slots, fifty thousand, seven hundred and sixty, total of four hundred thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars. Sixty-two hundred dollars of advanced payments is broken out for you to review, forty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars pay vouchers, substitute teaching, ninety-three thousand, five hundred dollars of food service bills.
Any questions for Mr. Lundberg on the bills and claims tonight? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. Roll call, vote, Mr. Lundberg.
Odie.
Yes.
Plumper.
Yes.
Schrader.
Yes.
Saxor.
Yes.
Odom.
Yes. Thank you very much. Financial report, Mr. Lundberg.
Okay, coming in in the month of February, we had four million, six hundred and eighty-two thousand, two million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars of receipts and two million, two hundred thousand dollars of dispersments, that's four point eight million at the end of February, total cash, or an eighty, or, I guess I was reading the general fund only, four point nine coming into the month, just under three million dollars of receipts and two million, six hundred and seventy thousand dollars of dispersments, left five million, two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars of cash at the end of February, four point eight million of that was in the general fund, one hundred and eighty-six thousand, and the capital outlay fund, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, and the special education fund, fifty-two thousand, and the pension fund, and forty-six thousand, and the enterprise fund. Of two million, nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand is itemized in the next two pages. You'll see that we received our state apportionment payment of three hundred and fifty-two thousand this month. That was right on budget of three hundred and forty thousand, just a little over our budget number. Uh, payroll and benefit summary for the month of February, just under one point eight million dollars of payroll, one million, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand related deductions and benefits are itemized for your review. On the financial statements and the revenue side of things, two-thirds of the, oh, sorry, two-thirds of the fiscal year are complete. I don't have anything to point out particular concern unless anybody had any questions. We are, our revenue for the general fund is a little bit lower than it was last year. I think we made the transfer from the capital outlay fund this past month of six hundred and seventy-five thousand, I haven't done that yet. So, that's the difference between those last year and this year, running very similar. Same with the expenditures, general fund is sixty-six point zero one, last year sixty-six point four two, right on target, same time last year, ninety-nine and a half percent we ended up last year. Any questions? I don't have anything concerning on the revenue or expenditure side. Food service statement, they're showing a profit of a hundred and ten thousand, a hundred and twelve thousand versus forty-four thousand last year, good profit for the year. Trust and agency statement, a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars of amounts held for others.
Any questions for Mr. Lundberg tonight on the financial report? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the financial report as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. Roll call, Mr. Lundberg.
Odie.
Yep.
Plumper.
Yes.
Schrader.
Yes.
Saxor.
Yes.
Odom.
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Lundberg. That takes us to, um, under General Business Administration Reports, Administrative Center, Superintendent Larson.
Thank you. Sorry, I got disconnected from Ellie. Ellie, I'm sorry, you got disconnected for one second after your motion, or after your vote.
Thank you.
So you're back on track. All right, ladies and gentlemen, a couple things, just to inform you of this evening. Teaching negotiations, timelines, wage recommendation for our nineteen-twenty contract. Would note that we've held some meetings prior to, working through contract language, et cetera. On March nineteenth, the Personnel Welfare Committee will meet with Business Manager Lundberg and I for negotiation preparations, and then in addition to that, we will have March twenty-fifth at our regularly scheduled board meeting, in executive session, preparation work for, for the upcoming negotiations. We will meet with the BVA, the Personnel Welfare Committee, Mr. Lundberg, myself, will meet with BVA negotiators on March twenty-seventh, and then pending the outcome of that meeting, we have a tentative date established of April eighth for, for ratification of the master contract. With that, I tell you what, we have, we have something a little different tonight, we're gonna go off script, I have a special guest, South Dakota Association of School Business Officials, President-elect Jared Olson, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Jared.
All right, board members, Dr. Larson.
Thank you. Dr. Larson, members of the administrative team, staff and committee members, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to address you this evening. My name is Jared Olson, I am the Business Manager of the Beersford School District, and I also serve as President-elect of the South Dakota Association of School Business Officials, our statewide organization of school business managers. Board members from South Dakota Aswell, we've been busy, working on all those little details to make sure our spring conference is a success, but no task so far has been as rewarding as selecting our two thousand and nineteen Outstanding School Business Official of the Year. As I read one of the candidates' letters of recommendation, words like transparency, fiscal responsibility, integrity, trusted within the community, really caught my attention. Then the list of accomplishments, four successful bonds, Chairman of the ECF Board, member of the excess general fund oversight board, Economic Development Board member, founding member of the Brandon Community Foundation, instructor of school finance classes for aspiring school superintendents, mayor, and most importantly, twenty-eight years of dedicated and respected service to a school, community, and the office. On behalf of South Dakota Aswell, the Board of Directors, our members, it's my pleasure to officially announce that Mr. Paul Lundberg will be celebrated by South Dakota Aswell as our two thousand and nineteen Outstanding School Business Official of the Year. Yep. Now, Paul will be officially recognized during our spring conference, and that banquet will be held on the evening of Wednesday, April twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen. Now, as I read the letters, I did wanna share maybe a few of the comments that were within there. Great lines in the letters and the recommendation, and I'd like to share what that means and to capture what Paul means to the members of the school district, some of those examples. "I'm proud to speak of his work wherever asked about our school district's financial standing, which is truly remarkable in its efficiencies and budgeting processes. Mr. Lundberg respectfully deserves to be one of the one chosen for this recognition. He's shown absolute leadership in his fiscal responsibility for our beloved school district. He's passionate about his job and compassionate for our community of Brandon Valley. I'm proud to call him my friend. Mr. Lundberg prides himself on the trust that he's built up and believes it's his duty to be honest and transparent with all stakeholders in our school district. Mr. Lundberg's commitment to being a Brandon Valley link for twenty-eight years makes him somewhat of a historian of our school district. As our business manager, he's helped guide three superintendents down paths of success with his extensive knowledge of previous hardships and successes the district has experienced. He truly understands the importance of keeping all lines of communication open and honest. Our school district is truly blessed to have Mr. Lundberg on our team. Paul's an exceptional person that cares deeply for the Brandon Valley School District, the communities that make up Brandon Valley School District and education in the city of South Dakota." My favorite one right here. "Above all, Paul's love of students and their success shines through in all he does. Every effort exerted within the business office, Mr. Lundberg has done to promote opportunities for the students of Brandon Valley. Our district's core operating principle is, our business is the creation of learning environments that result in success. Simply put, under Mr. Lundberg's leadership, business is good." Again, thank you for that for you being here, Paul, congratulations.
(applause) Now, again, you'll officially be recognized with just a little, just a little certificate, for now anyways. All right, yeah, thank you, yeah, we'll see you in April. Thank you, Dr. Larson.
Absolutely, thank you.
Very good, thanks everyone, appreciate it. Quite an honor.
So weren't you surprised?
I was.
I have never, I've never kept a secret regarding a, a, a school board meeting from him, so it was quite the task for the last little bit to navigate that secret. Thank you, Mr. Olson, have a great day.
Generally, when you see a spouse at a school board meeting, I thought, "Am I resigning? Am I getting fired there, or what's the deal?"
Very good, all right.
Mary kind of looked at me and I looked at him, "I don't know." Thank you guys so much, I appreciate everything.
Very good, we certainly appreciate all that you do and have done, and did I get it right, is it twenty-eight years, or is it more than that?
Twenty-eight or twenty-nine.
Okay, all right.
(inaudible).
Very good. So, teacher negotiations, we're aligning, we're aligning ourselves to have those completed by April eighth, pending, pending a successful negotiation period, in the event that that doesn't happen, we do have two other meetings scheduled in the event that they are necessary. So moving into our budget process, tonight we'll be taking a look at the preliminary capital outlay budget, that's a, that's a critical item of our budget process. May twenty-seventh, we will have our preliminary budget presentation, and then at our annual meeting in July, tentatively scheduled, or to be scheduled for July fifteenth, we'll have our public hearing and potential action. Update on the legislative day, Brandon Day at the legislature, we took twenty-some-odd students out, out to experience that event, it was, it was very well received, our kids, I will tell you, our kids behaved and acted incredibly, received multiple compliments, so hats off to them. Certainly, there's, there's some things that we talked about, could we tweak, could we change, to make it even more educational and more impactful for our kids, and there, there are some things that we maybe will look at doing a little differently, but overall, very, very positive feedback, and we look forward to continuing that practice. With that, session concludes on the thirteenth, veto day is held for the March twenty-ninth. Tonight, we have supervisory evaluations, contract negotiations here later in April, good news presentations, our elementary buildings will be presenting at our second meeting here this month, and then our academic calendar items to note, I just draw your attention to Thursday, we are planning to be in session, that was a previously, previously designated snow day. March fifteenth is a comp day, serves as a comp day for our teachers, for parent-teacher conferences, and then we will, we'll be taking a look at the calendar recommendation as far as modification tonight at the meeting. So, with that, I would certainly entertain any questions anyone has, or any items on that presented.
So, not a question, but I just wanted to make clear that at the beginning of my school board term, I declared a conflict of interest with my wife being a teacher in the district, and so with teacher contract negotiations coming up, just to make, make it clear and to let everyone know, for the school board meeting on March twenty-fifth, I will recuse myself of that executive session, when it, when it goes into executive session to discuss the contract negotiations, and then during the roll call vote, I will abstain my vote based on my conflict of interest.
Very good, thank you. With that, any other items or questions?
Thank you very much, Superintendent Larson. Mr. Lundberg, anything additional tonight, other than congratulations?
Thank you.
And I think we got ya, so that was good.
Yes, we did.
All right. Um, high school, Dr. Talcott, Mr. Sloughaway, neither one? Middle school, Mr. Thorson or Mr. Fr, they're not here either?
Conferences.
Oh, conferences, never mind. Guess I should've looked at my calendar. Now, Mr. Skipsette, Mr. Bab, anything? Okay, Ms. Fos, Mrs. Hoffcamp, anything? Mr. Horst, Mrs. Palmer? Um, Ms. Nelson, anything tonight? Mr. Hensel? Mr. Marcel?
Oh, good. Just to inform you, just to inform you that we, with the state basketball tournament and the impending, of course, state basketball tournament storm, we are sending the teams out tomorrow, we're gonna go out a day early, tomorrow, we're gonna dismiss after six period and get those buses on the road at one-thirty, so that we can get there during daylight. We believe tomorrow will be just fine, maybe a little bit of fog on the eastern side of the state, but we should get there just fine, beating any of the weather that's forecasted for Wednesday and Thursday.
Thank you, Mr. Marcel. No board policy tonight, so that takes us to our first item under General Business, to approve the recommendation to amend the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen academic calendar.
Very good, thank you, Adam Chair. So, what I wanna discuss a little bit is our current calendar situation, our academic calendar. I do wanna, before we, before we really get into the nuts and bolts of the recommendation, I wanna talk a little bit about what drives your school academic calendar, just so that it's, it's clearly understood. Two things play the primary role in your academic calendar. The first one is the master contract and negotiated agreement you have with your certified teaching staff, with the BVA, for lack of a better phrase. So, the BVA and the Board of Education have a contract, and that contract outlines that they will teach, they'll have a hundred and seventy-four student contact days, they will have X number of in-service days, they'll have X number of workshop days, they'll have X number of additional paid in-service and workshop days. So that is one component of your academic calendar. The second component of the academic calendar is the state law that requires minimum number of hours for grades six through twelve, one through five, and kindergarten. By no stretch of the imagination would I ever suggest that you only meet the minimum requirements. You don't achieve excellence in education and academics by doing the bare minimum, so that's, that's an important thing to note, that that's like the, the floor, as far as the absolute minimum that a school has to have. So, two things drive the academic calendar, your negotiated agreement, your master contract with your teachers, and those contractual requirements, and then also the minimum required number of hours as a line of state law. So, with that being said, I wanna speak to four things that we really critically think about when we make this recommendation regarding our academic calendar. Number one, we wanna minimize the impact on our families and our staff, to the extent possible. Number two, we wanna maximize quality opportunities for our kids, instructionally within classrooms. Number three is we wanna deliver on our educational commitment to the patrons of our school district, that contractual commitment that we have with our, with our teacher bargaining unit, and then in addition to that, we wanna leave some additional flexibility in the event that we have additional in those school weather days, like maybe Thursday. So, with that being said, the recommendation that we, that we put forth to you, and when I say "we," I mean I recommend, I'm making this recommendation, however, I did meet with, disseminate and meet with the administrative council regarding this recommendation, to garner their feedback, in addition to the, the BVA president and past president sat down, went through the, went through the recommendation to get their, to get their take and get their okay, for lack of a better phrase, nothing formal, but we did discuss it, and they did, they did approve of the recommendation. So, with that being said, Thursday, March fourteenth, previously designated a snow day, school will be in session. We altered, or will be altering, I should state, the end of quarter three, previously, I believe that was scheduled for March nineteenth, we will leave that to Friday, March twenty-second. That plays the biggest role in our intermediate and middle school, where they offer nine-week classes. So, for example, if we didn't do that, a, an encore class would have thirty-five days, and the other, the other section, the other nine-week period would have like forty-five days, so they're not very well balanced. So, we're, we're changing that quarter three to Friday, the twenty-second, to balance out those quarters. Friday, April fifth, school in session. That was previously designated an in-service day for our teaching staff. So when I talk about maximizing on quality opportunities, what I'm talking about is our teaching staff was already gonna be here, they were already contracted to be here, so they knew they had to be here, and April fifth is a, is a quality educational day in the fact that it happens prior to the state assessment. So, again, minimizing impact on families and staff, maximizing the quality opportunities. We saw April fifth as a real quality opportunity to have students in session. Thursday, May twenty-third, is a regular school day, that was previously outlined to be the last day of school for students, that becomes a regular school day. Friday, May twenty-fourth, no school. So that's the Friday before the Memorial Day holiday. No school for students, we will have an, that would be extra paid in-service PD day for our staff. It's relevant to note that that is the state track meet, held here in the Brandon Valley High School Outdoor, Outdoor Stadium, we do have staff that work that and whatnot, but no school because we need the facility. In addition to that, I would note that Friday, May twenty-fourth, was previously designated a workshop day for our teaching staff, so they were already contractually obligated to be here, they knew they had to be here on, on Friday, May twenty-fourth. We'll have our links PD in the morning, and then workshop following, so that all of that works out, we're still able to offer grad credit for our teacher in-service, et cetera. Monday, Memorial Day, no school. So again, minimizing impact on families, families still have a Thursday, Memorial Day weekend, in the event that they had plans. So, last day is tentatively gonna be Thursday, if they have Memorial Day plans, they still have the ability to Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, do Memorial Day plans. Regular school day on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth. Wednesday, at this point in time, becomes our last day for students, with the normal two-hour dismissal that we always have on our last day, and then Thursday becomes teacher workshop time. So, when I talk a little bit about having some additional flexibility in the case that we, we need it, what I'm referencing is, we need to have the ability to move all of that back at least one day, is what I would say. So, tentatively, let's say, we miss one more day of school between tonight and the end of the year, we have the ability to make Thursday, May thirtieth, our last day for kids, Friday, teacher workshop day, okay? In no way, shape, or form will I be bringing back to the Board of Education a recommendation that we have students come back in the month of June, unless the state minimum required hours are not met, and then we will be mandated to do that. But my hope would be, the very last day of school for kiddos would be in May, would be what I would propose. Now, in the event that that happens, what we would do is we would utilize curriculum development opportunities for our staff in the month of June to meet those contract days. They will have some flexibility to, to work those days, but that would happen in the month of June. So, as it sits, recommendation to modify the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen academic calendar would consist of adding Thursday, March fourteenth, Friday, April fifth, Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, Wednesday, May twenty-ninth, at this time, and then have the caveat that we can add that extra day or so, if we absolutely had to, in the month of May. So, with that, I would certainly entertain any questions that you have.
Anyone have any questions for Superintendent Larson on the recommendation? If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve the recommendation to amend the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen academic calendar as was just presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. Roll call, Mr. Lundberg.
Plumper.
Yes.
Schrader.
Yes.
Odie.
Yep.
Saxor.
Yes.
Odom.
Yes. Thank you very much.
That information will be disseminated to all parents and guardians of the Brandon Valley School District, either later this evening or tomorrow.
Okay, and pray for no more snow, please. All right, thank you. That takes us to item number two, to approve the Brandon Valley School District Fine Arts curriculum with multiple, multiple vendors for the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, forty-eight, sixty-two cents, as presented.
Good evening. The purpose of today's report is to identify the K-12 Fine Arts Curriculum Delivery Model. The Brandon Valley School District Fine Arts Curriculum Study began in the fall of two thousand and seventeen. This study continued into the fall of two thousand and eighteen, when all K-12 Fine Arts teachers were invited to make recommendations for new curriculum materials. Teachers from the following departments expressed interest in purchasing new materials, K-4 Music, V-6 Orchestra, and K-12 Art. Sample materials were ordered from a variety of vendors and individually reviewed by the Curriculum Advisory Committee members using a customized matrix. Additionally, the K-4 Music Committee members viewed three vendor webinar presentations, and there were no vendor webinar presentations for the art or orchestra materials. After individually assessing the curriculum materials, the Curriculum Advisory Committee members met with the Director of Instruction to discuss their findings and support their individual preferences with reasoning. When a consensus was reached, the Director of Instruction requested multi-year pricing proposals from the vendors. The proposed Fine Arts curriculum materials were presented to a panel of parents representing all schools on February twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen. The feedback gathered by the Brandon Valley School District via the Fine Arts Curriculum Advisory Committee shows strong support for the following proposed curriculum delivery models. The K-4 Music, the Music Curriculum Advisory Committee reviewed offerings from three vendors and selected Quavers General Music K-5 Curriculum, copyright two thousand and twelve, last updated November of two thousand and eighteen. Reasons for selecting the seven-year online curriculum subscription included an extensive library containing over twelve hundred songs- an extensive library containing over 1,200 songs, with new songs added quarterly. They can be projected on interactive whiteboards, over 6,500 engaging, interactive teaching resources aligned to the music standards, easy-to-launch learning activities, which can be distributed to individual devices with the scanning of QR codes, which means the kids just hold the iPad up to the screen, and the activities will come up on their iPad, there's no logging in for each individual elementary student. Um, and customization features, which enable teachers to easily upload their favorite supplemental resources, and additionally, teachers can work collaboratively to develop unit plans and share them electronically with their colleagues, this will foster consistency between buildings and across the district. Uh, this comes at a price of $41,160 for seven years. The 5'6 Orchestra teacher reviewed multiple warm-up books before selecting unit tunes of Fundamental Music Reading Supplemental for Strings, Volumes 1 and 2. This supplemental material was selected to enhance the music skills of our students in the areas of musicality, tone, and general knowledge of music theory. This came at a price of $628.62. K-12 Art, after considerable discussion and thoughtful deliberation, the K-12 Art teachers elected to purchase only a one-year subscription of the online platform, Art of Education. This on-demand learning platform contains an abundant number of unit and lesson plans that are directly tied to the art standards. It's updated continually, promotes cross-curricular connections, and provides professional development designed specifically for art teachers in the areas of differentiated instruction, creativity literacy strategies, formative and summative assessment, and instructional technology. Being cognizant of taxpayer dollars, the teachers believe purchasing a one-year license and providing them with additional curriculum development hours will meet their curriculum needs for the next seven years. Uh, $2,500. The elementary iPad carts, Quaver's interactive music curriculum is specifically designed to be projected on interactive whiteboards and accessed by students on individual devices. Currently, Brandon Elementary, art, music, and physical education teachers share a cart of 30 iPads. Purchasing three additional carts of iPads provide all four schools with equal access to technology. That is at a price of $75,000. Professional development ends, will continue throughout the 2019-2020 implementation year. This summer, the K-4 Music teachers will receive online professional development from Quaver to learn how to navigate their digital curriculum. Additionally, the K-12 Art teachers and the K-4 Music teachers will receive training from the Director of Instruction, and during this summer, the curriculum workshop teachers will collaboratively develop unit plans utilizing the newly purchased curriculum materials. During the 2019-2020 school year, the Director of Instruction will visit classrooms to view the implementation of the curriculum materials and instructional plans. Uh, this cost would be $5,760. Requests for supplemental Fine Arts curriculum materials within the next seven years would be submitted to supervising principals and the Director of Instruction, and approved by grade-level principals. So the administrative recommendation to the school board tonight is to approve the purchase of the K-12 Fine Arts Curriculum Delivery Model for the 2019-2020 school year at a cost of $125,048.62. What questions can I answer for you?
Director Nelson, can you specify, and I apologize if you did state it, there was parent review of the curriculum?
Yes, there was, and all buildings were represented.
Very good, thank you.
I got one question, maybe I didn't hear it, but, uh, under your K-12 Art, you have a one-year subscription, but yet this is for seven years?
That is correct. What they're gonna do is they're going to glean out of that subscription everything they can get in one year, and they felt that by giving them some PD time this summer, curriculum time to work on that, that they would be able to pull all of that out and use it for the next seven years.
Any other questions for Director Nelson? Thank you.
Thank you.
If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the Brandon Valley School District Fine Arts Curriculum with multiple vendors for $125,048.62, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second, roll call, vote, Mr. Lundberg?
Odie.
Yep.
Schrader.
Yes.
Clumper.
Yes.
Saxor.
Yes.
Hallam.
Yes. Motion passes, thank you very much. Next item, approve the preliminary 2019-2020 capital outlay budget summary.
Very good, Madam Chair, uh, the approval of the preliminary capital, capital outlay budget summary, summary is a critical component of our budgeting process. Uh, the approval provides the administration the ability to proceed forward with and begin the bid process for large capital projects. Um, it's important to note that our ability to complete the projects outlined within the preliminary budget are directly based on the results of the competitive bid process. So to make it as simple as possible, and to give you an example, if we get a good number on a large project, um, we're able to do more, and if we get a bad number, we're able to do less. So, um, it's a critical component of what we do, and with that, I would turn it over to Business Manager Lundberg for, uh, an overview.
The entire, uh, budget, line by line, was provided in your packet, so I'm not gonna go through that, I'm just gonna hit on some of the highlights. Uh, of this budget, there's about 5.8 million of revenue coming in. We are gonna save 1.4 million of that budget and tuck it away for future building projects, mainly the high school addition, a couple years down the road, so that, that's our, our plan that we outlined in our five-year plan. Debt service is the same as it's always been, 555,000. The expenditures in that, uh, 2.9 million dollars, the, um, big portion of that, 1.3 million, is technology, computers, a lot of replacement computers this, this year. Uh, $350,000 for buses and vehicles, some of the other projects that, uh, Mr. Henchel's got going, uh, asphalt of a quarter of a million, a middle, partial middle school roof replacement, 150 to 200,000, a partial carpet replacement at Robert Bennett Elementary of 150,000. So those, those are the types of projects that we have to get going on and bid them out, and, uh, hopefully, we have good numbers on those. A lot of things involved, a lot of equipment that, uh, in the operations side of things, custodial equipment, 40,000, grounds equipment, I think there was 20,000 in there. We're getting quotes and bids for all that stuff, and that's why we ask that we get your blessing a little earlier than, than normal. Any questions on any of the specific line items, I'd be happy to entertain them.
So, Paul, on the high school numbers, like 498,000, is that, uh, the laptop? I suppose that laptop technology?
Yeah.
That's what we got.
350,000 is the, uh, lease payment, and then we have to, with our enhanced enrollment coming up here, we have to purchase another 60, 70, uh, units this year. This will be the fourth year, or next year will be the fourth year of that four-year lease.
I had a quick question, um, I noticed in the intermediate, um, school spreadsheet, there's, um, a drone package. I was wondering if the school board would have a chance to get to fly the drone?
Yes, they will, I'm sure. I'm sure if you approve it for that, that instructor, he'll let you fly whatever you want. That's a component of the Smart Lab, I believe. Another module or whatever, that, that whole thing.
Anyone have any further questions on the 2019-2020 capital outlay budget summary preliminary? Should say. Everybody have their questions answered? Alright. If so, I would entertain a motion to approve the preliminary 2019-2020 capital outlay budget summary.
So moved. Second.
There's been a first and a second, roll call, Mr. Lundberg?
Schrader.
Yes.
Clumper.
Yes.
Odie.
Yes.
Saxor.
Yes.
Hallam.
Yes. Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Our next item, approve the Brandon Valley Board of Education members to attend the Board of Equalization meetings. I would entertain a motion to approve that, as presented, please.
So moved. Second.
There's been a first and a second, roll call, Mr. Lundberg?
Schrader.
Yes.
Odie.
Yep.
Clumper.
Yes.
Saxor.
Yes.
Hallam.
Yes. Thank you. Next, we have nine personnel items under consent approval. I would entertain a motion to approve those, as presented, please.
So moved. Second.
There's been a first and a second, roll call, Mr. Lundberg?
Clumper.
Yes.
Schrader.
Yes.
Odie.
Yes.
Saxor.
Yes.
Hallam.
Yes. Motion passes, thank you. A couple information-only items there for some internal transfers. Uh, does not look like there were any building permits submitted. Couple thank you notes to the Board of Education, um, does anyone, that takes us to formal board reports, does anyone have a formal report they'd like to share tonight?
Sure, I'll just talk briefly about our curriculum meeting we had prior to this school board meeting. Director Nelson shared with us a little bit about, um, the Gifted Education Program and kinda what's been going on with that, and how that's gonna be dealt with, moving forward with STEM. Um, and then we continue to iron out our new homework policy, or a revised homework policy, and, um, hope to have something for the board to discuss in our next school board meeting at the end of March. Um, that could be pushed back to the first meeting in April, we'll kinda see how that goes. And then, because it's also the Student Activity Committee, I just wanna wish the teams good luck this weekend in Rapid City, and mainly that they get there safe and get home safe, so.
Thank you, and thank you for thinking of our kids and coaches and getting them out of here ahead of time, so. Um, for alternative ed, we are in the midst of negotiations with McCrossan Boys Ranch. Um, that is something that, uh, we, that TeachWell contracts out, we actually hire the teachers for that entity, so, um, we are working on that contract and more to come when that is approved. Anyone else have any formal board reports tonight? Alright, there's one travel report there for your review, and then, um, do we wanna go into executive session at this? Okay, at this time, we will move into executive session under South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2.1 to conduct the superintendent evaluation.
Make sure you cite the statute going in. Cite the statute when you go in.
Okay, I will. Okay, gotcha, thank you. Alright, so that takes us to the end of our...
You need a motion.
Oh, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session, please.
So moved. Second.
There's been a first and a second, roll call, Mr. Lundberg?
Odie.
Yes.
Clumper.
Yes.
Schrader.
Yes.
Saxor.
Yes.
Hallam.
Yes. Thank you.